So it's six o'clock, we have forums.
All right, let's go.
Thank you, Anne. So, and our goal tonight is to actually be done by eight o'clock. If you did the first of the first three sessions, so this is the third session. Welcome back, Jim. So, we really don't have anybody that's gonna speak to the podium, and you guys are familiar with the give and take that goes on when we do one of these things. But Angus is gonna queue up the order, so we wanna make sure that people are here can go home early. Some of us will be staying later, so why don't we kick it off Angus, why don't you lead it? And I know you have your thoughts, I'm gonna shoot up first.
Yeah, so we've got the zoning matters, we have the town plan with us virtually, so we thought we'd start with those, and I think it's their zone. It's not gonna be terribly quick, and then we can either get into the CPC proposal for after, we didn't know if we might have someone here from Open Space Committee or not. We don't, so I would suggest after zoning, we get right to the water, and then, and then we could either, then we could just take them from the top.
Yeah, or whatever, again, whatever order you think.
Yes, to most sense.
So, thank you.
So, Sue, did you want to give any background on the two, the two proposed zoning matters?
We can do that. So, the two proposed zoning ordinances is an accessory dwelling unit bylaw, which is a new bylaw that they're proposing to put on the books, and the other is of a replacement, we're taking away and then replacing with similar, the non-conforming use in structures bylaw. So, in terms of the accessory dwelling use bylaw, this is a, an interest that the board has had for some time, they went through a a research and process and a comparison process for a number of months since the beginning of the year, or maybe back into last year, I think. To kind of look at what other folks have done, it's been a recommendation of past planning efforts, including comprehensive plan, master plan, community development plans, and the housing production plans for a number of years, so it's a recommendation that the board would like to move forward with. Their hope is that it will help diversify the housing stock and make living in West Newbury maybe more affordable to others. The, the non-conforming.
Maybe take them one at a time, and then we'll then move on to the next one. I know the public hearing was last Tuesday, the nineteenth, and if you could just let us know what was the vote of the planning board on the ADU bylaw?
Yes, so following the hearing last week, there were no changes recommended to what had been proposed, and they voted to recommend adoption of the ADU bylaw.
Was there any public input, Sue?
So, there were people there who had questions and weighed in on the listening session that we had prior to the hearing, and then at, at the hearing, there was generally, I would say favorable response to the bylaw. At least there weren't anyone that said that they opposed it at those two meetings, so there weren't any questions, there were questions about, you know, size and the use, who would be typical use, and what kind of restrictions would be on it, and but I think they're all questions that are answered by the bylaw itself, so like I said, it didn't, the discussion didn't warrant any changes to the bylaw, and none were suggested by.
So what was the vote on the planning board?
Oh, it's five to, oh, five to zero.
Five to zero, and the second thing is, Sam Gosling, what is his thoughts on, on this matter?
Yes, he's supportive as well, he's, we've had him review it along, as well as supportive help, so they're, they're both supportive.
Do you have the bylaw in that?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. This is page seventy-one of the document.
Rob, I have a question, you, do you mind if we just ask, or?
Oh, yeah, no, that's the discussion.
Okay, okay. Sue, I'm curious how this would be viewed by somebody that wants to have a short-term rental? Is, does this basically give them the opportunity to establish a short-term rental? There's no time restrictions on it that I see, although I know that was discussed early on in the process.
Yeah, so the board feels that the accessory dwelling units are another, just another form of a home for someone, and that they should be, have the same restrictions that any other home would have, so they didn't, they felt like if the town was going to allow short-term rentals in a home, then this would be no different. If they're, are not going to allow them or disallow them, then they wouldn't be allowed in the ADU either.
And the current point of view is that they're not allowed, correct?
What, short-term rentals? They are currently.
Well, I mean, there's a proposal. There's a proposal, and once it's, once it's removed, then they're not by right.
That's correct.
Right.
Because it's not specifically allowed.
Right, exactly, right, you'd have to specifically, so, but they're basically saying it would be like any other home, and if the town were to remove the current short-term rental policy, then we would not have to worry about that with ADUs.
No, that's correct.
Thank you.
On, under seven point six reconstruction after the past pure demolition, maybe I'm just reading this wrong, but the, the very last clause in that section, seven point six point.
Oh, we're, I think you're in the other bylaw.
Yeah.
We're not there yet, they're not conforming, we're just.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
This is, yeah. Yeah, I, my fault. It's a back of the Bible. It's the first time.
It's been named, hasn't it?
So, any more, any more questions? Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Chris.
You go first.
So my question is, how's this accessory dwelling unit going to be recognized as a taxable asset? Is it gonna roll onto the primary residence tax roll or tax base, or is it gonna be taxed as a separate unit?
Thanks, could you repeat that question, there was some noise here in my domicile.
Yeah, so my question is, how is the ADU going to be recognized as a taxable unit in town? Is it gonna be just additional square footage added to the primary residence? Or, or will it be?
Are, are these buildings going to be attached, will it be detached? Because basically what you do is, yes, either one, so the answer is you increase square footage on your main house, devalue property tax wise for that, if you have a standalone unit, detached, like a garage, it would be valued like that, if that's what you're asking.
Do you think there's any, you know, I don't know what assessing standard there is for a secondary, secondary dwelling unit on the same property, perhaps there is some issue in that.
Associated with that.
Well, no, you have, you have to, you have to, the, the whole thing about the assessing is you're trying to establish market value of the property. So if you make an improvement, like add a garage, or put, or, or do a room over a garage, you, you know, there will be additional value, that will be unattainable.
No, I, I understand that, but in this case, we now have a distinctly different living unit on, on the same property, and so, so, you know, is that, is that just based on square footage addition, or is it based on, is there like a, you know, unit value to?
Again, if it's detached, you'll handle it like you would a garage, meaning that you would take the characteristics of the specific unit, and you would value it for what it is, if it costs a hundred and fifty thousand to construct, hopefully, the assessor will come up with a hundred and fifty as the value. If it's added into the property itself, it's just like an extension of, so if we do an addition on our house, the assessors are gonna reestablish the value of the house in its totality, including what you've done, whether it's an addition to you, an addition that gets used as an in-law apartment, they just become measurements of value in certain calculated ways. It's, it's not obtuse or dense, it's done all the time.
I don't know, I was just asking because.
They currently have, you can have an in-law apartment, by special permission?
I'm sorry, they are not allowed at, at the present time.
They used to be.
There are, there, there are uses, there are, I think, existing, what the assessor calls two family homes with both, you know, I think, I don't remember, they call them, I think, my understanding is that they assess them like a two-family, even if it's.
We used to have the ability of in-law apartments, because we permitted a few, but, so those are taxed the same as this, the ability of this, it doesn't have to be connected to the main structure anymore.
Right, right.
That's always been the problem with zoning, so that's just.
And how, right, and how to, and what you can do this bronzer.
Right.
Right, to the, to the question of establishing value, that's the last thing we should be worried about, that's pro forma, that's established rolling state for hundreds of years, it's just. So, after you put an addition on it.
I understand, but are other cities and towns taxing these as separate units, or are they just?
Again, there's, it's building by building.
You know, you'd have to, you could sell them, if you sold the cottage or the in-law apartment as a separate structure, then you'd have to give them a hundred year lease or something, there's really no value, enhances the overall value of the property, that's what the tax bill is based on, is that property in total.
The property is the whole property, and, and you value what's on it, that's all.
We're just asking questions.
I'm asking, we're, we're going out and we're making a big deal about adding an accessory dwelling unit? My question was, is there gonna be a separate taxable unit there?
It depends on whether it's detached or not. Right, separate, no.
Okay.
Sue, let Sue answer the question.
Which is not an assessor.
I'm not, I am not an assessor, but I do know that these, the buildings cannot be separate, so the tax bill would go to one person, and however that's assessed, so there isn't an, there isn't, there isn't an opportunity to, to tax, to tax someone else, to pass the tax on to the renter, for example.
Within the bill, you'll have separate elements for separate components, meaning garage detached will just be part of the main building, that's all.
So, is it assessed value to both represent, have, to somehow correlate to market value?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I, I think, this is the way I was thinking, and maybe it's similar to Dan's thought, is I'm just wondering, now that you've added a revenue-producing property, does that change the market value? You've, you've, you've added a revenue-producing aspect to the property, does that change the market value of the property?
Theoretically, it can, and theoretically, that gets incorporated into the, how the assessor establishes a value, that's correct. The assessors are gonna lock in on this, it's, it's not gonna disappear, if, if, if these things turn out to be more valuable than the construction cost, then they'll start showing up. They'll show up over time in the sales data.
It might only be relevant to produce some.
But you could put for, depending on who's there. Yeah, exactly, a lot of these things are, you talk about revenue producing, it's, it's gonna be, well, I have my mother-in-law coming, and then I have my idiot cousin coming. You know, he can't, you know, my mother, I'm not gonna charge, it's the idiot cousin, doesn't, watch. Rick, it will, it will go back more, more to square footage and the finish, and, you know, whether it's sheet rock insulated.
Yeah, no, I, I get it, I understand all that stuff, I was, I was trying to come to terms with the, the revenue-producing aspect of it, but you're right, it could, it could be, you know, it could be relative, and there's, there is no revenue, or it could be a revenue-producing property, but I don't know how you account for that, and you probably don't. So I would pick that apart, because it could change every time.
Could there be any negative consequences if ADU passes, but the short-term rental bill doesn't get nullified, or?
Yeah.
That's a really good question.
That's what's gonna happen.
Yeah, well, probably, it's theoretically.
It's a really good question, and it could suggest sequencing them on the warrant for, for the SDR to come first.
Yeah, but you also then have to question whether you can establish by a policy properly using the property. Yeah, so you can, you can write a policy that probably shouldn't stand, because if you haven't allowed it in the zoning, you may not have one, you may, you maybe shouldn't have had a policy around this.
You, you made a general bylaw, is, the SDR bylaw?
Yeah, yeah, so it's not, it's not clear to me that, that, that council might not say, well, irrespective of whether you establish the bylaw or not, you shouldn't establish a bylaw because you're not allowed to do it by right.
That's interesting.
So, so I, I would, I, I would think that Anne's correct, I mean, we need to get that off, but my suspicion is, it, it doesn't apply anyways, so.
Wait, what do you mean it doesn't fly?
That, that someone could, yeah, it could be.
You can pass all the bylaws you want, the underlying zoning doesn't allow the use, then it's not clear that you should have had a bylaw that, that spoke to it, that's what I'm saying.
So, are we still, I mean, we're getting on the subject here, I guess, but, so are, are we still gonna vote on this?
Yeah.
Yeah, but, so are you suggesting that, that maybe we should not?
Which?
The short-term rental bylaw, if you're saying maybe it's not.
We've got to go ADU, no, I'm saying we should get it off.
Okay.
I'm just adding to, I, I, to Ross's point, the other way to, to address that is to say, but it's not by right, so you can't do it anyway, so. But we're not on that one, we're on ADU zoning bylaw, and hoping that we can.
You just said, no, hold on, Anne.
I know, one more for you.
What? Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Would be two.
Yes.
On the section five, item four, it says, the owner of a single-family dwelling must continue to occupy at least one of the dwelling units. So, is this precluding two families could no longer, could not have a accessory dwelling unit, doesn't specifically say it, but that strongly implies it.
So, as, as the bylaw is written now, this only applies to a single family, so a two-family does not have this, cannot put in ADUs by right.
That's it, makes us being single family. And then the, the premise of it, it says, is striking any language in italics, but there is, there is no language in italics to be struck from this document.
I think that's more than.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
Right.
Last comment back, maybe what, two months ago, you had a preliminary hearing on this, which I participated in, and I think this is great, and I think it would be handy and very well-received for a lot of people in West Newbury to litter, but in-laws or other family members in units that they currently have that they can use, so I'm definitely in favor of it.
You should make a motion to that.
Make a motion that we endorse the accessory dwelling unit bylaw.
Sure. Prefer the discussion?
On our side of the table, now we have five, any motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the accessory dwelling unit bylaw.
Second.
On paper? It's unanimous, is there a certain level of vote that needs to be taken on the two thirds, I believe?
I believe, I believe this one is a, a simple majority.
Because it's expanding housing opportunity.
Because it's expanding housing, this is one that was specifically cited by the new law that it would be, but I do, town council wanted to check one portion of it, and that was, we had language that said to have a unit larger than ninety-five square feet, or to have one with more than one curb cut, as is required, to just have one curb cut that they could go for a special permit. Town council was going to check and see if keeping that language in there takes it out of the fifty percent majority, or just the majority ruling. So, we should get a, a ruling from her on whether or not we're at fifty, or at a simple majority. If the language regarding the special permit takes it out, I think the board would be willing to have two warrant articles, or to separate it somehow, which is what town council recommended.
Maybe you break this into two? I'm a little confused, but. Yeah, what, what does that mean?
The very final section refers to a special, an option to bore a special permit in two particular instances.
So that would be a separate article for that last portion as an add-on?
If town council so recommends.
How would we do that within the warrant that's already been, um, voted on?
Yeah.
But you found Angus signing on.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's.
We have to reopen the warrant.
I don't, I don't think you would, I, I think.
It adds another.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, it's within the article, it's, until you sign and post the warrant, the warrant's not posted. It's, it's, it feels a little bit, you know.
Well, how about?
Needs to have like an amendment to a bylaw that was adopted in the prior article, and then in a subsequent article to amend the.
But what's the problem with going down for, for two-thirds?
Yeah.
Why don't just leave it at two-thirds?
I think this is gonna be a problem.
This is not gonna be a problem, I think we're great, probably supported.
Yeah, and if anything, I mean, maybe you could have something teed up with town council, that if it did happen to fail, there could be a motion, an amended motion without a special language, which would.
So, so, so if somebody sees, somebody sees it going down, then they, then they vote against it, and then they can bring it back up.
Right, wanting to maybe, yeah, right, that's, okay. So, so we're good on this one?
Yeah.
And we can move on to the next one?
Who's writing the rationale for it?
Although I'd love some clarification on what you're doing, what you're recommending.
Oh, the select board voted three-zero in, in favor of recommending, and the finance committee voted five-zero in favor of recommending.
And then, and then we're gonna.
As a single warrant article.
As a single, right, exactly.
Okay.
And then, and then there's also flexibility beyond this point in time to, to talk about, you know, what just came up, so. But right now, it's the two-thirds, rationale?
Right, right now it's two-thirds?
No, right now it's pending legal.
Thank you, thank you.
And just that, that was Dan, I think, Dan, just as kind of a, you know, helpful hint, in the past, you know, I found the article request forms, sometimes you can just paraphrase those as the rationale, so.
Okay.
Thank you, I won't let your words spin it though. Okay, so I think now we're on to the non-conforming use bylaw.
Yeah, my apologies for jumping, that's okay. Anne was still up in the.
Maybe the fourth question, Sue, if you wanna just, I know Sam's been working on this for a while, unfortunately, he's still not, unfortunately. Good for Sam, he's on vacation this week, well, but he couldn't be here tonight, you know, hopefully we'll, you know, Sue can answer whatever questions, but if not, just be aware, you know, he is back in town next week, so if there were questions that went beyond tonight, you could invite him in.
But this is, again, something he's been active in, if not.
Yeah, he's been the primary driver.
If not, the person putting forward, by the way, does an excellent job, so.
He sure does, too.
We should all kind of listen to him. Anyway, Rick, you have questions?
I did, yeah, in section seven point six, actually, seven point six point one, point A.
Yeah, before we, so, before we do that, Sue, can you just give it over to you to kind of frame what, what the intent of this is?
Yeah.
Sure, so Sam did bring this to the board as part, just part of his cleaning up of the jump, of the zoning bylaws, as he would say. He's looking for, to create efficiency and to create something that's easily understood and easily enforceable and not. So, this is one of those bylaws that has been changed in many communities, I know he has changed it himself in a number of communities that he has worked for. It basically changes the requirement for seeking a, a special permit for a non-conforming lot or use, and it allows that to be done administratively, provided that the change, alteration, restructure does not create a new non-conformity, or does not create a detriment to the community, so basically it allows, under certain circumstances, allows the building inspector to provide a permit without going through a special permit process, yeah. And applies only to non-conforming uses, or non-conforming lots and structures.
This, this is the type of thing that a lot of times we go through the ZVA, correct?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, so, so that you don't have to go to the ZVA.
Right, exactly.
For, for the things that are clear and, and the.
Yeah, yeah, and, and ninety percent of what goes before the ZVA was always allowed, because it didn't really do any, it had no adverse effects. So this, this is actually, you know, letting someone who's actually well-qualified participate in the decision, and probably someone that's actually a little closer on the ground than perhaps the ZVA is.
And certainly for a property owner, it, it will be a lot easier than.
Yeah. Yeah.
Than uh needing to uh know the ZVA, yeah. Rick, do you have any question on the items?
Yeah, we all good on everything else, huh? About two faults, three faults or.
Yeah, if I could just like a general question, how would a non-conforming lot be established? It was just pre-zoning or?
So a non a non-conforming lot is a lot that either doesn't have enough frontage. Or it doesn't have enough area as is required by that district. And a non-conforming structure is if it say is um set is within a setback, so if it's already in a setback. And it doesn't comply, that's a non-conforming structure.
Right.
So how would that happen, though? Was it before the zoning regulations?
Yeah, yeah.
That's why?
Gen yes, generally, yes.
Actually, just to clarify one aspect of what you just said. Um a special permit lot because it has a special permit, a reduced frontage special permit lot obviously doesn't meet. The zoning criteria other than through the special permit. So it would it would not be in any way impacted by this um by this particular by law, because you could already treat it as a normal lot.
Correct, that is not a non-conforming lot because it has a special permit, so it is it is a conforming lot in all.
Okay, great. So my my question, and this is probably a really simple answer, but uh again, seven point six, the very end of seven point six. The last clause says the provisions of section seven shall supply. Um I mean, this entire section is section seven. So does that mean all the provisions of section seven should apply? Or or is that is it supposed to be, was that intended to be the section, the provisions of section seven point X? Or I don't know what X is, shall apply. It's just not clear to me. It's a little confusing the way that's raised.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me.
Are you sharing? Yeah.
Yeah, I you know, hopefully I'm not making much do about nothing, but it just.
Yeah, it's not that. It's the whole word.
That's a very good question because it should, basically, you're not allowed to do that. Um so I think what it's referring to is is that seven would. Comply that in fact that it would need to go for a special permit, so um let me, I think that Sam needs to clarify that.
Would it just be section seven shall not apply?
Could be as simple as that, yeah.
Well, it would be, it's it's if it depends on. So it's talking about that the proposed reconstruction is going to be non-conforming again.
This talks about exceeding exceeding certain aspects of it, so I think Wendy's uh observation might.
Yeah, it might be, although there was a provision elsewhere in here that. The Board of Appeals may grant a binding or the. Yeah, there there were there were allowances or there was acknowledgement that the Board of Appeals could come in too. But it's not like here, so.
Right, it's not even saying that it would uh like it could potentially be made conforming if it was located other than the original footprint, so. Is there a different section that? Maybe it's the wrong section they called out.
So this seems to me. Did go to if. You're gonna do those, either of those three things. Then you may not be able to do a reconstruction. So section seven doesn't apply. But like Rick pointed out, that leaves you the avenue of going elsewhere for relief.
Yeah.
It could be as simple as that.
It seems to me that it ought to be, maybe that needs to be rephrased, if it can possibly be rephrased still for. Um because it, I mean, it should be unambiguously clear when somebody reads the bylaw.
So you have a meeting next Monday.
Right.
We have a meeting next Wednesday. So can we resolve this?
I I I'm fine voting on it as is.
As is?
Yeah, pending clarification. I mean, to me, it's not substantive.
Okay.
That's why I've been, you know.
Unless it changes how we would think about it.
That one clause did not need.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know. I don't know what to think about it. I don't know what it means right now. That's the problem is that I don't know what it what it actually means right now, so I.
I can't imagine anything it could mean that would change my mind.
Okay. Well, no, I think it's fine, but but I I just.
All right, I just don't wanna. Time to discuss.
See, planning board meet this coming Tuesday, Sue?
That we do.
Okay, that.
Yeah, October third.
So on on Monday, we can, when Sam's back in the office, we can confirm what the intent, I think Wendy, your theory probably is good as anyone, but who knows? And then uh, you know, perhaps the next night, I know the planning boards formally closed their hearing. Uh but I think this is really, it seems like a scrupulous error type issue, and uh you know, if it looks like it's something more than that, obviously, we'll we'll know that. But if it's really just uh, you know, uh.
So Sam were to clarify, this the planning board did not its head.
Recommendation.
Right, not its head.
What we would put in the warrant.
Right, right, right. So that leaves us with the question, if you want to take it up tonight with that as a.
Make a motion, right, and see if.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept the uh amendment to the non-conform use, the zoning by law pending clarification of section seven point six point one C. From the building inspector and having no substantive changes to the regulation.
Second. For those seven.
So what do we think it means then?
So I.
The the what I, you know, so.
Sue, what what do you think it means?
So what it means that if if you're trying to, if you're trying to reconstruct after a cat. Catastrophe or demolition, that you may not cause the structure to exceed the floor or the original. You may not exceed applicable requirements for set setbacks, and you may not cause the structure to be located other than on the original footprint. That is what I believe that it means.
Going along with what you thought, Wendy.
Mm hmm.
I agree, because th- there's other avenues then that you kick in and you want those other other avenues in place.
Yeah, okay, right.
Okay, so you guys get a vote?
All right, all in favor? The motion, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. Outside of the table.
Make a motion to replicate what Chris said. On article seventeen. Or accepting or amending the non-conforming zoning bylaws.
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous. Who's gonna do the rationale? I'll do the rationale then. So uh by the way, uh in communicating going out from this point, um. We had a warrant article draft. So these draft warrant article numbers are different than what if you look back to previous things. So you may have thought you were writing the rationale for. Twenty-four. Um or. Yeah, and and you just check what you're writing the rationale for, because the numbers on the scorecard uh all got bumped down by one.
Doesn't name write in the column, like.
I know, so use the name, but 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 make sure you're looking into it, because numbers are important too, otherwise.
So only people care about numbers, right?
Yeah, right. So um. Good, so we're good on that one?
I I think that is gonna be a two thirds vote, but we'll obviously confirm this.
Yeah.
I did go ahead and send the draft warrant over to town council on Monday, the whole thing, so they're already reviewing.
Right. Right, so we just have to wait on uh on how we're gonna approach both of these for votes. Um which is fine. I mean, if we can't do them right now, we can't do them right now. So I guess up next. Oh, Sue? Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sue, I think we're gonna, we talked it over ahead, and we're gonna talk, take up the water issues before we get the stormwater, so. I understand if you wanna move on with your life. So with respect for that, we've got a couple of water folks here, so.
No worries, no worries.
So I'll I'll let you know tomorrow how that all goes.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Cool, that was queuing up the next item.
Yeah, so the next item, this is the, there's some twists and turns uh with this one. And uh for those who've been following the process uh closely, I think it's, you know, kind of followed a logical path. Uh very stepwise path uh. But where we are tonight with the uh uh proposal received from Weston Sampson is not where we expected to be. Even two weeks ago, never mind, you know, six or eight weeks ago, when we were uh brainstorming potential uh fall time meeting articles. So this really, the invitation to Weston and Sampson to provide a proposal for. A broader study of uh sites in town for potential viability of public water source. Really arose directly from the select board discussion of the uh draft co-place peer review that's been included in the past couple of packets. Um and the uh is not, as I said in the the email transfer I sent out uh earlier this week. They're not mutually exclusive. Coming into tonight's meeting, I have no idea what the select board's gonna recommend in terms of what to put on a warrant and what to propose for funding. Uh but the, I did confer with Wendy, you know, a week ago Tuesday, and we both agreed, basically what happened was uh. The a lot of this came from the discussion of the uh assumes uh impact of sea level rise. Uh with the year twenty-one hundred timeframe. And we had talked last Monday at the select board meeting about if there's, if that's the assumption that the board's gonna make relative to the potential development. Of a a specific site named the whole place. We really need to understand more globally what would be the impact of that, because uh that would have. Impact on other existing and potential future. Down infrastructure, not just water, but roads and dams and, you know, you name it, so. We had uh reached out to Weston Sampson the morning after the meeting. To see whether they would be uh whether it would be within their wheelhouse to create. Some mapping to show, to illustrate what would be the impact of that sea level rise of. Uh the hundred year storm of that plus six feet. So that's where the conversation started. And uh we had seen similar mapping and and some climate resiliency planning that City Newbury Port had done, showing different scenarios over different timelines and. You know, I think we all felt it would be really valuable to have that understanding. And so the discussion I had with Weston Sampson last Tuesday, they said, A, yes, we can absolutely do that. But B, they they said, you know, sometimes they've been engaged by different communities to do a study just just such as this. To look, you know, townwide at different uh, you know, criteria that could recommend, you know, different. Lo- locations or specific sites as being more or less viable for uh testing the potential water. So I reached out to, before I had them kind of take the time to write all this, I reached out to Wendy. She said, yeah, let's invite the proposal. They said they could turn it around in a week. And uh so that's what you have in front of you, so as of this meeting right here tonight, this is the first time the board is convened and normally seeing this. Uh so they have not made a recommendation on whether they might go forward with this, or if so, whether uh there might be revisions to it. Uh so uh. That's where we are, and so I think it's it's on the board's uh plate, and then think can respond, and obviously, we've got Bob and and Mark here as well. Uh. You know, to be involved with this guy, so.
I'll start with a motion to see if you have confirmation.
Okay.
What are the articles? Numbered as six.
Okay, make a motion uh to support article six. The front, the Weston and Sampson. Hydrogeologic is hy- hydrogeological services for both of the summer fifty thousand dollars.
Sorry. What discussion?
Me. Seems like it's a much more deliberate, a much better way to proceed. Um I was, despite my skepticism and. Meetings that um we've had previously where I've discussed that I don't see how anybody comes up with a, you know. This is not, I don't I don't know the science of searching for water. Um but there's some real logic here. There's, you know, using available data, they define sets of data that. Um through combination are. I'm not sure likely is the right word, but have a a reasonably strong probability of giving um uh. You know, uh substantive results that actually means anything. Um as opposed to us just going out somewhere and drilling a hole and hoping for the best. So I I think this makes a lot more sense than um. Than a more scattershot approach. Based on what we senses available pieces of land. And and not not, you know, not to say that that wasn't a. That there was no validity to that, but I think this is a much more valuable way to approach it.
I think this is the way it should have been approached.
Yeah, you've said that several times.
I feel like I'm spinning our wheels.
Yeah.
This is, it's it's a setback, and it makes you stop and think about it, but.
Well, I I do think it is a setback in terms of our overall schedule. I think. That how meeting people may say, I thought we were ready to put a well in, you know, we, this originally was for testing to update the permit. So we need to be prepared if we go forward with this, that that there will be some.
You say that to put a well in, but we don't have a property owner wants to sell, we don't have, that's a, that's like. Kind of nail gel to a tree also, that.
Right, right, we understand that, but but town meeting voters, you know.
Okay, but that. In my head, more than likely will not come to fruition based on many factors, which declaring this document, this is the most brilliant document I've seen. That I've read in my twenty-nine years of town. It tells how they're gonna do it, where they're gonna look, they're gonna prioritize locations to existing infrastructure. These are all the things that we should have been looking at. I mean, suppose they found a beautiful site, and I can think of one on Main Street. You got a water main right there. I mean, they're they're gonna go about this methodically. It's a timing setback, but I think in the long run, it's gonna advance the process. Uh both logically and quickly, more than otherwise. You know, we're just rolling the dice and everything.
Yes, I don't even think it's necessarily a timing setback. It's maybe it's maybe a setback based on what we thought.
I perceived one. I don't think it's a real.
Perceived. But but, you know, we might have come up with a really bad decision. Uh otherwise, they might have committed a bunch of money for something that in the long run. Proved to be a complete waste, and and there's no guarantee. Right, there's no guarantee that this is gonna give us good results, but I think it is a higher probability that this gives us good results.
They give us a matrix of the five sites which they prioritize. That's better than us trying to guess that. We always think what it could be. These are the professionals doing it. I just think it's brilliant.
Well, but Mark, do you have anything to add?
I haven't read it, I haven't seen it.
Yeah, so I think.
This was, was this.
I yeah, I I emailed it around, but it was just, it was, yeah, it's not.
The timing has been back, back, back.
Yeah.
So you know, yeah, no one should feel bad if they blink and missed it.
Yeah.
So I I think the history of the water department efforts have been based on drillers. You know, experience.
Yeah, but it's not just, you know, go on a little go over there. He, we've had, like, Moss Services has their hydro. With Ryder, I don't know what Ryder's title is. Yeah, he is a hydrogeologist as far as we know. I mean, he's he's the one that says, okay. You know, look here, he was the one that counted both places. He was the one that says, you should build down here, this is where the aquifer is. You know, he he's put some research in, so it's not, it's not, you know, during the night that it was. This is a good spot to look because this is where it should be running.
Yeah.
So this this approach basically is an engineering approach to look at existing data, GIS maps, you know. All of that stuff, and then to come up with a list that identifies in terms of potential yield, water quality, you know, infrastructure needs.
And exclude properties, anything within the Newbury Port uh they have legal rights to, and anything within the.
Like.
Well, we.
Yeah. I I actually, that is an area we ought to clarify, because I I was, you know.
I guess that's the ask for that after that, that might need to be.
Oh, okay.
The number could go down, they reduce that, we don't know that at this point.
Yeah, within the two towns, I'm not sure what that means.
I think that maybe is a template issue.
Oh, that's funny you talk about where do what zone, what can we think?
The arch of.
Yeah, the arch of watershed area.
Yeah, so we.
You know, I know, I know that.
So for them to look at that section, I would give you. Always nice, so it was moved out, it was blue flood flowing on its page.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, okay, alright, okay.
They would exclude like Wendy said, any known contaminated areas, things like that. And then you're left with parts with a ballot. And then they have a process, they're going to look for permeable materials and they, they tell you how they're going to look at each. Piece to determine if there's potential for water there and using existing documents, so um.
Yeah, so you, you were, you were intending to reach out to Weston Sampson about the arch of watershed.
Well, I did. I, I brought that up with them on the call last, last Tuesday. I said, you know, in terms of scope, because they kept saying townwide. I said, I'm not sure what we want to do townwide. And I explained to them about the nineteen oh eight water act and that. Um, the city of Newbury Port has, has significant rights to water resources within the arch of water bed. Um, so that's not reflected in this proposal.
Yep.
And that's something I, you know, we can talk about tonight because if you wanted to go forward with this. It would seem that we would want to go forward exclusive of that land. Uh, although we want, as I noted, might, might email them, you know, we'd still want the sea level rise mapping townwide. But in terms of identifying potential sites, it would seem we'd be, you know, better off keeping that focus outside there.
They know it within zone, it is not wasting time. We don't find them more water.
Correct.
The other, the other thing I wonder, so um. I'm not sure what the breakout is in terms of percentage in the area of the town, but you know, part of the town is in the Merrimack River watershed and part of the town is in the Parker River watershed. And um, so is there any complication with us? Um, with us now going into the Parker River watershed? How, how, I, I guess that's, that's a question for the state.
Yeah.
Um, but, but I, I don't, I don't know.
That's about twenty five percent of the town and it's, it's the back off the main, off Main Street, so. I find it unlikely that a source back there would be identified, but.
But even so, then you just have to deal with whether there's issues or not.
Right, right. And, and, and actually, you know, the Parker River, if we're, you know, expecting recharge from um. You know, precipitation, not only is it, you know, okay, it's twenty five percent, but it's also. Um, we're relatively high in that watershed, so the likelihood of having, I, I, I guess I just. I, I don't, I want to make sure we don't sort of go out of bounds somewhere that is, that is, you know, either we can't use, it was a waste of time.
So on that, I, I have pulled up on that screen, this was not in the packet, this is not this from a city in Newbury Port water study, but. This goes to geogram, boundaries of the watershed, uh, the arch of watershed. And under the nineteen oh eight legislation that gave city Newbury Port, uh, basically control or, you know, rights to the. Uh, reservoir, it gave them rights to tributaries and basically the entire watershed. Contributed to the reservoir. So if we were, you know, now Rob made a really good point earlier today in terms of the. You know, there was the litigation when the well was developed here and this, the town did succeed in that litigation, but um.
But you, but we need not go there unless uh, perhaps uh, it's necessary. I mean, you know, what you're hoping to end up with is. Five things that you can look at pluses and minuses on.
Yeah.
And, and I would presume that Dole Place uh, would still be one of, would, I mean, still under consideration.
Unless sea level rise.
Yeah, exactly right. But you want it, in other words, we're not turning our back there. All we're doing is looking to see. And you were the Newbury Port presentation, the engineer, and basically what he did was, here's your ten characteristics. Here's the five locations, uh, this is great for that, but bad for that. And, and that's all we're talking about. I agree with Rick or whoever said. This isn't necessarily slowing down anything. This could actually beat up everything, everything. Because we, we know that there's going to be issues down at Dole Place, not saying we're ending it or not, but. But this thing at least can, can queue up some other things, some of which might actually be the, the better things. But we, but we don't know.
But I think we have to talk about the issue of Dole Place and the validity of that based on the sea level rise.
Yeah.
You had emails today from a lady at Weston Sampson, not really good news based on the assumptions that they're making. So do you keep throwing more money after something?
I think we've already drawn money at Dole Place. I don't think any of this, I mean, but they shouldn't have to review anything.
No, right, it's just, it's just one, you, I'm just saying, you know, we.
It should be a benchmark.
Yeah, 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 it should be a benchmark. It might, it might fall within the top five, we don't know.
Yeah.
I would be agnostic to that. I thought, I thought the chips fall where they may. Weston and Sampson isn't going to ignore it. But then they can lay it out compared to other things, so.
My question would be though, that study that's currently in process is put on hold.
It is.
Yeah.
Do we keep it on hold? I mean, it seems, yeah.
I think so.
Well, that's what I think, that's not what I'm hearing from others.
Well, and, and just to be clear, the remaining portion of their scope is really the cost estimating. Uh, both to develop the sites, to build out the infrastructure to get the water where it needed to go. So that is basically a peer review of that. January twenty twenty one, uh, was it twenty one? Uh, Tated Howard.
That was more current than that, but yeah.
Was it, or was it January twenty twenty two?
All we know is that number's not coming down.
Correct.
So, I mean, why spend money to find out you already have a forty nine dollar profit that's forty two years.
Right.
That's nice.
Sighting that's had a water, hundred flood.
Yeah. I thought we'd already discussed. Suspending that.
We did, yeah, yeah, we have, yeah. But it's part of this discussion because that's, it's all about the water. I'm just asking, what do we do at this point?
I don't think we should.
We don't pretend to.
I think putting it on hold makes more sense than just, than just throwing the towel on it. Okay, I, I, I think we should try to understand all of our options and hopefully um. At some, at some point we'll get more current updated um, estimates from the state regarding their, their. Sea level rise uh, projection and, and, you know, at that point, you may conclude it, Tom, just.
Or, or not. So, but let them go about their work. Yeah, we don't have to put any more money into Dole Place. But certainly we wouldn't want to, us sitting here, shouldn't be the ones determining whether it stays in queue or not. Those guys should.
Yeah. I mean, wouldn't we want to, as far as what we're paying for, I mean, we want them to develop or, or notify. New sites, I mean, and tell us one we already know about.
No, no, you, you, you're, you're bouncing against the, the sites. In other words, you, you've already got criteria in place on Dole Place.
Right.
You'd want to.
We don't want Dole Place on the list that, on the report.
Right, that shouldn't be one of the five, maybe it's number six.
It should be like, maybe it should be evaluated comparatively with.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
I also do evaluate in the context of the study because suppose it comes back and that's the number one site, then we got a bigger problem.
Yeah, exactly.
But I guess my point is it's already been evaluated. We don't need to spend any of the.
Already an ID. You know, already found.
Same criteria that they can use on every other parcel lot.
I don't see the need. We already know what produces, you know.
Not the production, we have the water area and the location.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to waste money on that. We've already spent a ton of money.
They already have all the information queued up. All I'm saying is the report should not.
Ignore it.
Ignore it. It should be.
Certainly.
Fair to other ones and hopefully they.
We don't have the exact same set of information, Chris, but we do have substantial information. As long as they compare the Dole Place to the other five waters. We're paying them.
We're going to know where the fine water is.
Not, not fine water we already found.
Right, I mean, we can do that internally. We could take the Dole Place information we already have and say, okay.
No, but you want them to do it.
I know, but I don't want to waste money on them.
The information are there, they, all I'm saying is, you don't want to end up with a report. That the most obvious question is, well, how does Dole Place stack up with them? You just put it in the report, right?
I don't think the scope needs to, to address this issue.
Uh, I think it's something, it definitely have a conversation with them. Uh, I, I doubt it. Uh, because I think it's whether it ends up in the top five or not, based on the process they've set out, it's going to be an iterative process. It's not just going to be them running things through a model by saying here's, it's an iterative process involving discussion. So I think, you know, the idea is to narrow it to five, not to, not to have a universe of five. So one thing that we talked about last Tuesday was that, and which I think is, is some real value that could come out of this work is. Uh, to tip off to them, you know, what are the prior sites the town has checked in, what have been the results? And so that would involve getting some documents from the water department, shipping those off. But so that we would have all in one place actually a complete list of what sites have been looked at over the years. Which is obviously going to inform their thinking about, you know, it's going to really. You know, add to what, you know, what they can get from, uh, you know, GIS data and so forth. There's going to be a lot of qualitative data that's, that's going to be high value. Uh, in terms of what was good and what wasn't good, and if it wasn't good, why wasn't it good? Uh, so that's some, that's, I think, uh, you know, one of the ancillary benefits of this is to actually have like a definitive. These are the sites that have been looked at. This is why they didn't work, because that's not all in one place.
Let me ask you something. Um, we're having valuation issues with Dole Place right now anyway, right? As far as the seller. So if the report comes back and says that that's the best place in town. That's a major problem as far as us acquiring it.
It, it's actually not.
Should it be in the report?
It's actually not.
Footnote, should it be a?
Yeah. And just, so just in, in brief, the, the, the. The, the legal disagreement, and we think we're right, and our attorneys think we're right, and our appraisers think we're right. And actually, we're not, we're actually, we're, we, we think they're right. We think our attorneys and our appraisers are right. What it comes down to is what's the value at the point of sale?
Right.
What's the highest and best use at the point of sale? If the town was to acquire any particular site for a water source, Dole Place or otherwise. At the point of sale is what's the highest and best use? What does the zoning allow? And that's going to be residential, that's going to be a couple of house lots. The property owners' rap is consistently taking the position that the value, that there is value. That should be reflected in the uh, offer that is based on what, on any playground. That is not what, uh, there, there is no, no private party can realize that value because it's not zoned as a water source. So whether this shows it's a high value site or not, really is immaterial, in our opinion and, and our attorney's and appraiser's opinion. To the value of the land. The other thing is what would a third party pay? What would an arms length transaction pay? And that's what the appraisals have said, multiple appraisals, and that's what the offers that have been made have been based on.
Right, but you know, if the seller doesn't agree and he doesn't buy into that theory, then it doesn't matter whether we're right or wrong.
Well, that knows.
Yeah, and then all.
And, and, and the seller, the, the owner has already expressed their desire that we take it, that, that we pursue having to do.
Yeah, he just thinks so, it'd be a different outcome of what we.
Correct.
But here's, here's the point. If, if it turned out for some odd reason that Dole Place was the place to pursue. We would want to know that. And that's why it's got to be in the report, because then it kicks off, we're going to go there. And, and, and then it triggers all these things we just discussed about. You want to know it.
There's, there's going to be sections in the report, there's going to be new sources and then there's going to be.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, and, and like Angus said is, other than what Newbury Port controls, and we should stay away from unless we're not won the lawsuit. By the way, we won the last lawsuit, um, then, then you always examine the entirety of the universe. And then you whittle it down to the five best candidates, whatever they are. So not having Dole Place. Be part of that. I'm not saying we should spend any more money. I suspect that they're not there. They're going to have more on Dole Place than they have on anything else.
Yeah, I, I don't know that there's going to be like fifteen water sites.
But I, I did, we're talking about, Dole Place has to be part of it.
And, and I think that's true for another reason, Rob, because the language of this article request was similar to Dole Place. It's a little bit of a stretch what we're proposing here.
I see no benefit taking it up. I see no benefit taking it up. I see a lot, I see negative if you, if you don't. Because then definitely the question is, well, what about Dole Place? Well, you know, we decided, no, no.
No.
Does these guys tell us what the five sites are?
Yeah, the, the language is, is, is the draft, this article lines. Uh, well, basically, but that's. It's, it's the matrix.
That's the way I would think you're looking at it.
No, I'm looking at, um, it's mentioned thirty window place three or four times in this.
And. Wonder why the township makes the pictures.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying it, it's specifically geared toward Dole Place, but it's. Were you on the page eleven?
Oh, the prior article? Wait.
No, no, the article, the article itself doesn't mention.
No, no, I'm sorry.
Oh, the request form, okay, yeah, 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 got it, yeah.
Um, the other thing I just want to touch on is this is a lump sum proposal, which I really do not like. I don't know if they will be willing to. I'm happy to place the amount of materials, even if it's fifty five, but I just want to know what.
Yeah, yeah, time materials, I hundred percent, you know, agreeing.
But here's the end of the fifty if we're reduced.
Yeah.
Built by the Newbury Reports.
Right, I, I do feel like this fifty is high, but.
Yeah, for Warren, I feel that's good.
Yeah, but I, I don't want to say, okay, here's fifty.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, 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 right, right, right. But, but it means we can.
Yeah, time materials with a not to exceed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I just want to give Mark, you know, or Bob the opportunity to weigh in here. I mean, this has been kind of your mission, I mean. Because we're asking the town to pay for it, we're kind of, you know, proposing this, but I don't want it to be like we're dictating to you, you know, so.
Well, first of all, one thing I would not rule out Dole Place.
Right.
To do that, I think we're going to kind of roll through, yes. There are three sites that I personally would like to look at. We have not really got anything in writing with any one of the hand landowners, so I don't want to say there and what. Because it's, it's just a verbal communication between the, the two landowners. Uh, the other one is still the John property, which we've sunk two holes on. We've done the, the, uh, all of drilling, I mean, I'm sorry, the pump tests and all that kind of stuff, and that material was upstairs. Uh, I'm not sure why they ever developed it, but I do know it's high in sodium. Every other place we've ever, we've, we've drilled has a myriad of problems. And this uh, property was awarded with radar. Uh, you're talking over a mile to run pipe and free phase electricity. On top of a lot of other things that, that at the time was, that's just an astronomical amount. But what we could get out of it wasn't worth it. Uh. We've sunk a couple of other holes in that general area with the, the den property. They're under influence of surface water. Again, pretty much unacceptable. Uh, we went over to Dr. Brackville's property, I think we got a teak, a teak up. There wasn't much. Jim Brackville was kind of using that well, I think it was ours. I mean, it was an aqua hole, but it's not enough to supply the town. We did some stuff on Rick Philo's property, again, the Eleanor Two was a minute or something like that. Uh, I was just working for the water department then, I didn't know a lot, and we had, uh. DLR was one of the ones that did, or they did all of the well drilling. And when they were doing it, they were following fracture traces. Which is probably not one of the better ways of doing it, but I mean.
Yeah, that's what this report says, that, that, you know, the bedrock wells are more difficult, or bedrock scorches are more difficult.
They are, they are a lot more difficult, uh. Mainly in some respects of what they brought in, where those fractions come from. I mean, you might have one that sits going through peaks or something like that, and it's got all kinds of stuff. You don't know where that, that water was coming from. And DDP would like to see us use shallow wells anyway. So I mean, we've looked, we've got the information upstairs, we wouldn't have to give them to anybody to sit down and go over. Uh. You know, I don't know the sites that they're, they're looking at or anything else, but.
Well, I, they don't either yet, they're going to.
Just like you said, you, you look for certain things.
Right, okay, uh, yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure you're on, on board with this.
Oh, yeah, it's just, you know, I don't want to give, I don't want to shoot that one down.
Yeah.
And then all of a sudden it becomes, uh, maybe we shouldn't have done this, yeah, uh. You know, but we do have to look other places, yes. I mean, that's just, that's not the ballgame in town.
And actually, we're happy to have you guys sell, well, because your findings, so, you know, that's something that we haven't been able to do in the past. It's been, we want to look at a site, we need to figure out how much money we have. Now we can look at the site, you know, what we're spending our money on, so.
Yeah, so potentially we can find a site with this and then water department can pay to actually do the well test or something, you know?
Right, I mean, it, it's going to be, and I've said this right along, it's going to have to be a collaborative thing between the water department and the town. Uh, the town, and I've said this at a couple of our meetings, the town's going to have to decide what it wants to do. Does it want to become self-sufficient as far as water goes? Or do we want to buy water for Newbury Port or wherever else for the rest of our lives? That's a decision the town is going to have to make. Right us, we'll put a Band-Aid on this system, we'll do it to young. If they want to buy from you, we'll keep them. If they wanna buy from you, we'll keep the thing running and whatever.
But you have some documents and institutional knowledge, it's gonna be very helpful for this.
Oh, yeah, probably, what what, yeah, it was just, yeah, yeah. So I think, yeah.
So, Jim.
I don't think I might, maybe for Andy too, but one of the, going back to the T A N hour study years ago, one of the things that was still an unanswered question, because it wasn't a thing at the time, was PFAS chemicals is forever.
Right.
And now they are. And will the new scope of this study, of this new study, kind of contain any of that at all? Or is that, uh, is that a future thing after we, you know, kind of figure out?
That's a phase two.
Phase two.
Yeah, we'd have to actually do a pump test to determine.
This this will show us things that would lead us to then take other actions.
Got it. This will give us volume, the next one will be quality.
Got it.
And the thing is, whatever we get for PFAS now, there's no assurance of what we might see for PFAS.
That makes perfect sense, got it.
If you have PFAS, it is a minor treatment or a major, and if you couldn't, they can commence it minor now. Like you're saying, you pump it the next month, you make mine out, it's a major, so then you're coming back with, you know, a fair, fair amount of money that.
But that fear extends to most, every place.
Yeah.
That would, yeah, so it's almost like you can worry about it, but no matter where you go, you're gonna worry about it, so.
All right. Oh, sorry.
No, no, I was just gonna ask, so so you guys are saying, and.
We have the voting yet, oh, but.
No, no, what what I meant is, we're clear on what the Warren article is, correct?
Okay, yeah, and just to draw attention, I did, I did do some revised language, uh, from bottom page three of your packet. Uh, just in terms of reframing the draft article language. Uh, see if the town will transfer appropriate bill of funds, some blank for cost associated with identification and evaluation of sites with the potential to support development of public well deals to improve all the survey expenses. So, that's. With all of this, is, you know, the entire one goes through town council review and so forth, but.
Um, I think that's good.
Angus, did you get an answer back on with the, whether it's a commission for a week, a day? Uh, I did, and, uh.
Kind of a twos.
Uh, let's see, I think, okay, so I forwarded that to you at eleven twenty-four today, I know you've been. No, no, I I I got the, I got the response, and I sent it to you within, within, uh.
Yeah.
You know, but I I know you've been, so, yeah, it's, anyone wanna paraphrase what what Sarah had said? It's it's a couple of paragraphs here.
About.
About, yeah, you know, the, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, you know, you narrow it down, boil it down to two issues, in effects on infrastructure and uh, potential effects on the resource. Um, and the effects on in- infrastructure would likely um, be temporary and you know, in the event of of, you know, a, you know, a a flood event that hit the threshold, um, would likely require shutting down the the infrastructure, you know, stop operations, you know, for some period of time. That that period could be hours, it could be weeks.
Weeks, right.
Um, regarding the resource itself, um, indeterminate, um, could be.
Yeah.
Could be not, not an effect, but could also be terminal.
Yeah, it could be cumulative, that was the other.
Yeah, right, yeah.
That, you know, if it happens again and again and again, eventually gets a place for the resources, it's not.
Yeah, so there is something, uh, in your inbox.
Just to complete that, and it's impossible to say anything more than that, as far as.
Yeah. So, yeah, I I sent that, and I I sent that to the the commissioners as well, so it was just early, you know, late morning today. But that's, that's the response that we got.
Contaminations of the word, that's.
Oh, yours, yeah, yours, oh.
And so they're, they would look at both the hundred, the six feet and the twenty seventy data, I think.
That's what they've set out, I think that's something that can be, you know, obviously, this is a proposal, we're a ways away from having appropriation, signing contracts, so that can be fine tuned in terms of, do you want it to just look at six feet? Do you wanna do one at plus three, one at plus six, one at plus, whatever, uh, but that can be, uh.
And plus, aren't we waiting to see some updated stuff from the state?
We are, we're gonna sound again today, and I mean, you can.
Yeah, it's, it's, we don't know yet, I mean, what, the, um, our contact, um, her name is Michelle Allen with the M V P program, um, who is the best contact I know, at least, you know, based on our experience up to this point, because we're working with her on the road issues, and she's attuned to climate change impacts. So we asked her, you know, who do you talk to in the state to get, uh, some feedback regarding, um, the expected release date of the, you know, projection, uh, updates? And she's reached out, she hasn't heard back yet, so.
So ideally, we have that, but we may not.
Right, exactly, so the point is, it's, as we go through it, we'll, we'll see other things we should be looking at or discussing.
Yeah, any further discussion? Want to favor?
By the way, um, before I forget, what's the fiscal year on this?
Uh, Jesus.
We're on twenty-five.
I would say twenty-five.
Just, why not, I mean.
Yeah, definitely, yeah, definitely not, yeah.
Yeah, okay, motion from outside.
He just, the people we said.
Yeah, I'm gonna, uh, make a motion to, uh, use the select four motion, uh, Article Six.
Was there a numeric wire? Is there a numeric value though?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty, fifty thousand.
What the intent is for that to.
Timing material does make states right, but for Warren article supplies. So is there a second?
Second.
And second, all in favor? It's unanimous? I'll do the rationale. Okay, so now we're gonna, uh, move to the top and go through in that order, Angus, is that what you?
Uh, sure.
You're queuing up, you're, you're queuing up, so, uh.
Yeah, and the next one, so this is.
Thank you.
We will, we'll need you in the future, but not.
We're gonna lose a second, I'm gonna see a little dust mark.
We'll see you in the future.
Well, yeah.
Good luck, all.
Thank you.
You'll have a nice day, thank you.
Okay, so you have in your, uh, packet, the, uh, analysis that we did on estimated tax rate, and, you know, I always at the minute, actually, I realize on a number of assumptions, it's the best that can be done at this point, and theoretically, we end up being really close, but we always make sure people understand the values are certified. Uh, new growth isn't certified, well, certified, and the revenue projections are pretty, uh, pretty predictable, uh, those don't change much year to year. So, uh, the question before really the board is, uh, do you want to, uh, put an article on to transfer free cash to offset the upper twenty-four tax rate? I do wanna just provide one update, when I sent out my memo on Monday, which is the one that was in your packet, I had not accounted for the Kentucky budget change, which did add about thirty thousand dollars, or will add, would add about thirty thousand dollars to the bottom line of our twenty-four budget. So, uh, earlier today, Jenny did do an updated memo, it's not a base change, but it is a change, so I'm handing around hard copies of this. And if you look at it side by side with the memo in the packet, uh, that, you know, and I'll just deal with the, uh, fifty percent of property, uh, the updated max increase without a free cash transfer in the memo was three hundred fifty-two dollars. Uh, based on the updated budget, it's three hundred and sixty-eight dollars, uh, so it's, you know, it's, it's not a huge change, but this is a better estimate, and then if you did a free cash transfer to fifty, uh, the memo said two twenty, yeah, typical increase, or, uh, or not typical, the, uh, yeah, that median value would be two twenty-five, with the update is two thirty-three, so it's quite similar, but we just wanted to get the fact available data, so it all ties together. So, it's it's really, uh, it's a policy decision the board considers every fall.
I'm interested in this, think on the opinion of it.
Well, so, a couple of things. One is, do, do we have a sense of where this would put us for a free cash number?
Um, I think within five minutes, we we can.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
The reason I ask is, so we've, we've gone up as high as two million, we've gone down as low as, I don't know, we were down one point four at one time. There is, there is in fact, an existing unsigned policy in town to have five percent of the operating budget, is that what it says?
Right, yes.
Yeah, so the way I look at it, last year, when Angus did one, said, you know, we're, we're gonna have an increase of six percent, thus we put two fifty again, but we brought it down to three. This year, you guys had said something about the town, the 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 town government, not including the school system, would be like two and a half percent, three percent, we thought. We we had a large increase for the schools, what was the increase for the schools?
Um, let's.
Proximately.
I've got it, I've got it here, uh, for the schools, it was an increase of eight point two percent in the aggregate, and that, that does not account for this recent increase, so.
Right, 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 so, so let's just call it eight percent and and three percent, so. So I was expecting, since bulk of about half of the town business, I was expecting that we would be seeing something on the idea of about five percent. I was comfortable with going to five percent, I think we should recognize that the schools are costing us more. I have concerns about how much free cash we're ending up with, because I think there's issues that are coming that we're gonna want to have some free cash, so, you know, whether it's in free cash or stabilization, so.
This is the conversation, but look at those two again, as I kept saying.
And there's more than one stabilization, but, uh, Jen, Jen, any idea where we're at?
So, so the spreadsheet that where we've got, can you, are you able to access the server? The spreadsheet with the tally, there's a hidden, off to the right, that's got the amounts and the sources, and for that, you're gonna have the bottom line uh, total amount, it's kind of what we use as the raw material for that, uh, you know, thing you see at the end of the pin column, that comes from.
But you see, I've gone back.
I can. The, uh, yeah, the schedule. So they're hitting off to the right. So there's, and if I have, so put fifty grand there. And that's what, at the bottom, there's gonna be a. The total combined amount of all the articles for free cash is three sixty-nine, three seventy, three hundred and seventy thousand. And we had a certified balance of what, two point three, yeah.
There you go, so you you're, you're up around two million, but let's just talk.
That's right, yeah.
So you're up around two million, which is the top end of what we've been experiencing, so that makes me comfortable.
Well, and not only that, what's gonna happen, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on, uh, you know, at the end of fiscal twenty-four, there'll be some amount of turnbacks, just like there are every year.
Yeah, but.
So that.
You can't turn on those now, otherwise.
Correct.
I mean, but you could expand this out for next ten years. So, so, so if you use two fifty, that brings us down to about seventeen fifty, is that what you're saying? Does, does the numbers you just gave me include the the two fifty, or?
Yeah, so it'd be one point seven, one point.
Exactly, right, 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 so you'd be in that range. So, so the, and again, five percent is.
Is just about nine hundred thousand of the, of the, um, operating budget.
So the policy would have us at nine hundred thousand? So forget the policy, so, so, so.
That's why you have to look, you're getting way above that.
No, I mean, this is, this is.
And this, I don't see why, I I know. These are the free cash.
This is the context of the discussion, it was a free cash.
Yeah.
This, this is the context of the discussion should be had, the five percent is suspect, I mean, I I think that we need to do some modeling that shows a combination of retained circumstances, so we know what we have behind us. But but if you're talking about, we're gonna go from, uh, uh, again, what was it, Rick, about seventeen fifty, you said?
Between seventeen, between one point seven and.
One point eight, yeah.
The same as fiscal twenty-one.
So do you wanna be higher, or do you wanna be, uh, down around, uh, twenty-one, which was, to my mind, lower?
And then what about the stabilization account?
Well, that's what I'm saying, so we gotta go back to the basic question. We're on pin column last year, you kept saying, you gotta look at the stabilization and the free cash together, and how they interplay, and what the policy should be on the two as a totality. Cause we're just, it it kept saying last year, you're crazy, the two fifty, it feels good, it does feel good, but we don't know if it's correct.
But right now, you could not incorporate stabilization into that, because the answer to how big stabilization should be is looking forward to, uh, uh, what you're gonna purchase for monthly for capital. So that's, that question needs to be taken up, but you can't take it up right now. So, so the point is, is, you know, do you wanna be down at one of our lower levels? Or do you wanna be up at one of our higher levels? Um, that that's where it comes.
Can I answer your question?
Well, I I think you guys gotta speak to it, we have, we haven't even seen a Warren.
I would rather be at the higher level, so I'm saying.
A free cash, a free cash.
I'd rather than taxes, the net difference is a hundred and thirty-five dollars to attack a house. For a hundred and thirty-five dollars on my tax bill, I'd rather, yeah, yeah, I'd rather leave it there in the free cash. So we have some of these issues, like, we need a fifty grand to look at water, I'd rather have that money available for that. If the detriment to me is a hundred and thirty-five dollars a year, I don't.
I never liked this, I never liked this, this idea of putting, taking money, putting it back. I I just think it, the up and down every year, let's give the taxpayers two hundred thousand dollar, I don't need a hundred and thirty bucks, or whatever the number is. I'd rather it be more consistently.
I like the logical program, look at the.
Logical program, because you don't know, there's, you wouldn't wanna give it back.
Yeah, maybe a four hundred thousand dollar a year, maybe, but a hundred and fourteen, please, it's insulting to the taxpayers.
Again, without, without reducing it, without reducing it by the two fifty, what if we add a little tax rate increase?
Four, two, six, or something, four point one, oh, that doesn't.
And would be, yeah, four point four.
Four point four, that's lower, that's, that's an accomplishment, that's the thing we gotta remember, the four point four. The four point four, given the rate, the fifty. The rates at schools, the eight percent, that's half of it.
That's reactive.
Four point four is an accomplishment, it's all right, it I, it's better than I expected.
The the other benefit that we're getting as a town is we don't have any long-term debt at this point, that still frightens the heck out of me. Uh, cause it's an illusion, we have these projects coming, we just haven't spent much.
Well, and we have a tremendous, well, we have a fair amount of water debt, we have a tremendous amount of future water.
Yeah, and the town.
That's time, yeah.
That, you know, projects coming, you know, the bridge and.
Oh, yeah.
But, so. You know, I think one thing I'm wondering is, you know, it sounds good to have extra money, but a lot of the big roaming expenses that I think we're worried about aren't really, in my opinion, like, right around the corner, so what would the intent be to the extrapolation of this concept, I mean, are we gonna be at two one this year, and then edge it up to two three next year, and then two eight, I mean.
No, the intent, the intent is to actually model this ahead of next year, so we can answer the question.
But in the end, we're gonna nudge it up, no real.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna keep.
I think no action is better than taking action that you're not sure why you're taking action on. Yeah, I mean, you know, relating precedent is probably. I'd rather say, take the time out, don't fund it, do your modeling, come back to us and let us know what we should do on a regular basis.
Right, right.
That's my.
Rick, we, we're in a good financial shape. But we don't have a model that shows us what we actually need for the future, not yet. And and that's what we gotta work on.
I I'm not quite sure how we, how we get there with any confidence in, in, uh, in the numbers, because there are a lot of unknowables in our future, um.
Then, then maybe we should just let the finance department go. I mean.
Well, yeah, Rick, that's not what I said.
Rick, the the uncertainty, the uncertainty is always gonna be there.
The progress here, Rob. Yeah.
So, but to your, I mean, you can get close, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Close.
Of course, I think what, I think what we had said last year, or we were deliberating over, was that just, you know, our gut instinct was that free cash was high, but stabilization was low, and combination probably wasn't terribly far along.
Right.
That's kind of how we left it, yeah.
That's what we're feeling, but again, the stabilization needs to be tested more than that, you know, because the ultimate question is how much in free cash, how much in stabilization? If you come away knowing that the stabilization is where it should be, then then you had. If you come away knowing that the stabilization is where it should be, then then you have the ability to feel more comfortable. About letting that balance ride down, but if you if you were to go and 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 run some stuff, and it indicates that. The stabilization might might be uh, underfunded, for instance, you may wanna be bringing some. Money from free cash, that's really all that's being said at this point. I I just think you have to get comfortable as to whether you're okay with the increase. The percentage increase with the help applying money, do not, you should apply some money to it, that's my answer. Cause it's your, it's your decision, right now, we have nothing in front of us.
Right. Even with Jen, you know, the paperwork that they just gave, a three hundred and sixty eight dollars added to your tax rate for the year, it's not. Terrible, I don't. Doesn't strike me as a big number. You know, Chris, it probably isn't to you, probably isn't to me. But that's.
So don't forget, a low amount of dollars is gonna be a low number.
Yeah.
But even still, you know, I I just think that, you know, just put it that way, you know, I think that the government shouldn't sit on money without an intended purpose for it, right? To that is, even though two, three hundred dollars isn't a lot of money, just conceptually.
I I would tend to thirty bucks a month, of course, my home isn't. Seven hundred and fifty, but you know, thirty bucks a month is is a noticeable. You know, increase where the taxes are.
I will tell, I will tell you another thing is, by now, so even when we. Had the, we didn't do free cash to reduce tax rate, we did something else.
We did overlay.
So 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 the deal is, the deal is. You know, speaking to the uh. Point counterpoint. We've set our stuff, we're needing to reduce, do this again until we have a model that shows why we want. That is a thing too, and 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 so. So, you know, again, you have to get comfortable, you're going before the the townspeople. They're used to free cash being applied, there's a good argument to do it. Unless we know we shouldn't do it.
But the net difference, if you don't do it on the average house, is a hundred and thirty five bucks. And to your point, Ross, you said, um, holding the money with no purpose, there is a purpose.
Yeah.
It's sort of like you, you have a bank account, so if your refrigerator explodes and ruins your kitchen, you've got money to go and allocate it, this is. Free cash is, we just took three hundred and seventy thousand to fund the articles we're looking at in the fall town meeting with that money.
Yeah.
Um, it it's it's not a direct purpose, but it it's a it's a reserve in case something goes kaput that we haven't thought about, or. In the other case, a luxury that we wanna explore.
Yeah.
Um, I agree with you, I don't wanna see the town taking excessive funds from it, so a lot of this is also term act, as Angus said.
That's right.
And that's what you, you know, money that did get expended, it was funded, but either got, came in under budget, or never happened, or whatever, so it was anticipated. Um, no matter what happens, on the average house, whatever they call it, it goes up two hundred and thirty three dollars, it's going up, we know that. The extra hundred and thirty five. I just can't believe ten bucks a month is gonna hurt. Anybody living in a seven hundred thousand dollar house unless they're rich.
Beware of the question, you know, well, where are you guys trying to get to, well, we don't know, just.
I'm trying to get to, we have a policy, right, delineates, we don't have that, so we're rolling dice.
So, well, okay.
Yeah, I'm having a motion that we go to two hundred and twenty two dollars, or two hundred and twenty two thousand dollars. Which is the average for the last six years, and and we've, I've heard talk about a model, so let's see a model.
Yeah, fine.
Let's see a model next year.
That's what we wanna do, because if you don't measure stuff, Rick, you can't react to it. You gotta measure it.
So, there's a motion.
All right, I'll second it, so for the discussion.
If I could chip in a little bit, so I think the point about turnbacks is is really important, cause I. Well, some of that are totally unavoidable, you know, position that's budgeted, not filled, cause it's vacant for three years or something like that. We do carry some amount of contingency in the budget, a couple of clear examples of that. In health insurance, we always, we budget it down to the dollar, but then we add contingency for like two employees that might be hired. You know, on a family plan that weren't part of the organization, that's one example, and others, the finance can be reserved, like, that's absolutely a contingency, there's a couple of things in there.
You wanna budget, you wanna budget, you wanna budget higher than what you.
That's right, so so I'm looking at our year end numbers uh, for FY twenty three. And we spent ninety six point four percent of the budget, so that's why I'm pretty darn close.
So what I, what I.
But, if I could, that's a turnback of six hundred and twenty three thousand dollars.
Except.
So my feeling is if we took that out of the taxpayer's pocket, and and we didn't knowingly overtax. But I do feel like giving some amount of tax relief is is a good.
Another way to do, another way to do it is take the turnback. And then go to the special town meeting, go through all the uses of free cash, see what that leaves. Because that that, so you know, anytime you do anything like that, you're kind of trying to get a handle on what might be appropriate, so. So in my mind, that would lead us prob- probably, and Jen's over there figuring it out right now, but but that would lead us to be having. Turnback minus all the free cash used at special town meeting, would lead to a number that's, you know, bigger than a bread bar, you know, might be about two hundred thousand.
Right, but it's pretty close to.
Yeah.
Two fifty two, probably.
Yeah, right, so, right, so, so Chris. I think we have. We have a consensus that we're gonna move towards a model that allows us to have a different conversation, it's like when the water department came before us. Mike presents numbers the way he shouldn't present them, and the way they track them up there is great, Jody does a great job and stuff. That, the conversation with the water board should have been, here's how they show their numbers, by the way, it should have included revenue. We didn't include revenue, that was an oversight, this is the same thing, we've gotta have. That kind of modeling that we all work with daily, that will answer these questions, because, yeah, I I think. That there will be a question of how big is big.
Will this motion include that request, I guess, of Mike?
Well, you guys just have to tell if you want us to do it.
That's what I'm asking, if that's incorporated within the motion.
I I will tell you that uh. I don't wanna overpromise, but I will tell you that the cleared up platform. Is actually gonna make that kind of multi-year projection a lot more attainable, it's something we could do absolutely, if we have. Dozens of hours, which we don't, but I think that the new software is actually gonna help us give that level multi-year, including, you know, the the stabilization balance and all of that, I think. You know, part of what we're hamstrung by is, you know, we're using the old methods of Excel, which is great and powerful, but it's it's very kind of intensive.
Right, and in the meantime, though, we wanna have this in place, and there's no reason not to have it in place, we we we. We can jointly work with the finance department and end up doing this, so that when we have this conversation next time, there'll be a context that makes it easier to have a discussion.
Is anybody spring town meeting?
Oh, I would think so, sure, yeah.
Period.
Uh, I don't know.
What, no, no, this isn't.
I do think we're gonna have a better, you know, I think each of the last couple of years on the capital planning, which is really, you know, so so intertwined with this. Each year is better, each year we're closer, and uh, I think this year, I know this year, we're further ahead than we ever have been at this time of year. Uh, we've got, all the department heads are doing their capital sheets, when we deliver that by November first, it's really gonna be a really good baseline. And um, so, you know, I. Yeah, I I think one of the biggest questions is, well, there's really two. One is water, and whether at some point that becomes at least partially a town financial.
Right.
Uh, commitment, I'll say, the second is paid school.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, those are two enormous variables that make it different, you know, difficult to to make like really. Good projections, so those are two big policy decisions that won't be made.
But in the meantime, you can always have, in the meantime, you can always have. And even without answering that, because you're always gonna be in a position of this unknowns in the future, but you can still have. A more simplistic modeling that at least shows. Where the balances are uh, in the various uh, retained surpluses, and how it might relate to what we think is coming up. Over the next five years and count them, so it it's not, even even absent the system.
Yeah, you know, we're very, we're very close to that, it's like, it's just, uh, yeah, we we really are.
In addition to the two that Angus just pointed out, I think the other thing that's looming for us all from a tax rate standpoint. Is when the school stabilization fund dwindles to nothing, and then I I think that'll have a particularly significant impact on taxpayers.
So on that, the the uh, this current year, we drew two hundred thousand, which is significantly less than than the prior year. And every uh, a penny on the tax rate is about fifteen thousand dollars, so what's that, what's twenty or about fifteen, it's like.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, like about thirteen cents on the tax rate, so if we hadn't drawn from school stabilization in the current year. This this memo would show about thirteen cents more on the tax rate, so. It definitely is an impact, but I think the decision the board made and the finance committee supported last cycle to taper that down was a smart decision. Uh, so that it won't be such a shock in the system on that.
So do you have an amount that you guys are gonna?
Yeah, well, so I, I mean, I second it, just to move this along, but every, every year, I I don't like this, and every year, I just say. So here, three years later, we still have a month.
Who's who's been saying three years ago?
I'm saying, every year, I've not been in favor of this, the first year I voted against it, and I was coerced into it, and then here we are, Jim, and I don't like it, so.
Right, uh, we all agree with you, this this process sucks.
Yeah, so I.
Would it be more palatable if we did transfer to stabilization?
I would like that a lot, that's what I would do with final budget, if I had extra money.
Not going back to the taxpayer, but it's also not sitting in this. This bucket of free cash, you know, as a.
What's the problem with even in free cash, though, you know, if Jim is talking about the school, I'm thinking that goes away with the two years where we split it down.
A little bit more, it is a little bit more.
But even this twenty eight, you can theoretically use that, use that edge another year, if you wanted to, I'm just, it's another opportunity.
It just, yeah.
Yeah, if you have a plan for it, so we're gonna leave the free cash here, and then in the spring, we're going to fund X with this excess free cash, rather than. Taking a number, throwing it against the wall, and saying, we're gonna send this back to the tax rate, I don't like it either.
If just moving to stabilization, we haven't answered the question, I'll stay.
No, but we know stabilization.
It's easy to get out of free cash if you need it, so that's the benefit.
But you can also be increasing discretionary spending, because we pay for a lot of articles out of free cash.
I don't think we do, because we've got a bunch of people sitting here keeping an eyeball on it. I mean, last meeting, we took the the assessors office from twenty five down to twenty grand.
Right.
Nobody's gonna, be pretty slight to sneak something through, I think, this is pretty level of scrutiny.
Yeah, yeah, but that's, that that is one, that that's the reason why you you gotta. Have a way to show how big it should be, cause people have the fear that free cash should be used as if it's free cash. Of course, we don't take that approach, we know that it's writing a check, so so, but, so anyway, you, motion is what?
Two twenty two. Two twenty two, so I just, I, you know, I didn't say nothing more, so, um, you know, the way I look at it, I mean, I I used to be very skeptical of of uh, of this transfer, but. I. You know, my thinking has changed over time, and, you know, as I see it, um. The taxpayers are unintentionally overtaxed, because we have to make sure that we're covered across a base of 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 areas. Um, you know, Angus, Benton, uh, health insurance, I mean, there 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 are a number of areas. Where we have to cover for ourselves, because if we don't, we're in a pickle.
Yeah, everybody's over there.
So, that causes us to unintentionally overtax taxpayers, and this is just a way of. Resetting, so you know, if it happens each year, at some point, you just look at it and say, well, wait, this is neutral. Um, you know, each year, we're unintentionally overtaxing by two hundred and something thousand dollars, and each year, we give the same amount back approximately. So.
Unless, unless it's too much money or too little money.
Yeah, so, so so I'm actually quite comfortable with it now, because it just seems, it it, we're kind of level setup, um, you know, within a range. Um, and and um.
What what if we should move a million dollars?
I don't disagree with Wendy said about, you know, needing to build stabilization. So, that needs to be a very thoughtful process of what 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 we do there, um, and and um. You know, I, we have some huge expenses coming up in the next ten years, or maybe less. Um, and, but we don't know what they are, we we can't characterize them at all yet, so yeah, we need to start building stabilization to at least provide some offset at the outs- at the outset of that. But to me, this is just, uh, you you know, on an annual basis, we're sort of giving back what we unintentionally took in excess, and we have no choice to take that in excess.
Are you guys voting?
Yeah, we should.
All right, so.
Just wanna say, I'm not opposed to the concept, but without clear direction, I can't endorse it, so I would rather have a timeout on it, wait till the spring. Get a program in place, and then move it forward, I agree, generally, it's gonna be between two and two fifty, and it's gonna be turnbacks and things like that that cause it, but we're just sort of shooting in the dark here, it doesn't feel good.
All right, so, um, all right, all in favor?
All right.
All opposed?
Right. So there's the second question, uh, even though the majority is not supporting the article, do you want the article to appear on the warrant? Cause they could appear on the warrant with a negative recommendation, and let the taxpayers decide, it's their money.
I'm just trying to vote.
Because.
They could put it on the warrant and not recommend it. Or they could leave it off.
I would think to select those.
No, one, one, they're both, one of two again, philosophically, I would think that. For form.
Yeah, I I agree, unless we want to, you know.
That's the will of the town, so you know, that's wishy. If you don't have, we don't have confidence, why should the taxpayers? I'll go with that.
It it has been precedent there, so. I'd say your attempt, from today.
So you think it would be good to have it on there with a negative endorsement?
Uh, personally, yeah.
We'll watch and see how we vote, and that way. I mean, I personally would like to be able to explain mine for a second. So is the warrant article coming over to us?
I'm not sure if we're gonna, I mean, we voted. Against it, so we have to decide if we wanna leave it on the warrant or not.
Sure, it's my turn.
Yeah. So, Chris, what do you think?
I. I don't think it's a good idea, but the two, if you do, I'll follow soon, I guess, I just. Why would you put something out there you don't endorse, I, if you don't endorse it, you should not. I guess you can, it's like a lot of people, I don't know.
Are they gonna grasp all the concepts like like the turn?
I I don't know, we should put it on, if we're not willing to support it. So I, I, I know you said I can make motions, but.
Well, there's no, I I don't think there's any motion needed.
To to.
Cause you've, you've said you don't, you don't recommend it, and so I think we just drag it, I just wanted to kind of put that.
It doesn't go to the warrant, that's to the end of the rule.
Okay.
It doesn't go to the warrant.
All right, I thought it was two separate votes.
Yeah, so I'm I'm troubled, because by default, then I'm associated with with that, but I guess that's the way it works, the general rules.
What do you mean?
Well, we can vote if that, if you feel that about that. Vote to remove it, I mean, so you can go against it.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to do that.
All right, um, I move to remove this article from the warrant.
I can do.
Right, all in favor, I have. Although, no.
Thank you.
Good.
Angus, next up, yeah, next up, this is, uh, this was kind of leaked written news with the Kentucky budget, we were meeting last Tuesday, they had. Uh, uh, it was just a formula error, they had it by the out of district. Students study number of students, and that affected the allocation, uh, results in a net uh, increase in the operating budget of uh, twenty one six eighty five. Uh, offset by a slight fall in the operating budget, ninety six hundred, and an increase in the capital assessment, about three thousand. Uh, there's a lot of paperwork that, you know, Greg and Brad handed out at a meeting last Tuesday, that I don't expect people to like follow. But I did just wanna make one point, the main reason for the change is the uh, uh, error on the allocation of students. But the revenue projections were also somewhat higher than they had carried in the budget book, so this this sheet up on the year. If you look back at the budget book from last February, or whenever it was, you'll see these numbers a little different, cause you may wonder, well, why did the operating assessment go down? It's cause the revenues went up, whereas the capital assessment's going up because the allocation was wrong, so there's a lot of moving parts. For some terms, but the net effect.
But this is the final answer.
This is the final answer.
Parting shot, retirement.
I'll I'll tell you, he was very sheepish, he did not, he was just a cycle, it was just an error, but and unfortunately, he, it was very. You know, but it is, you know.
Paying out of his pocket.
So, so in terms of is this the final answer, Rob, uh, as you know, every year, we get an assessment assigned by the superintendent, the treasurer of the school. That's the official binding document, uh, when it, when we met last. Uh, when it when we met last Tuesday, Greg said he would send it out later that afternoon. We had gotten it. I reached up to him early this week. He did send us just yesterday. An unsigned new assessment with these numbers. We still have not received a signed assessment, but yes, this is the final number.
And we don't have a choice. This is just for people.
No, in fact, if they all voted, we're not gonna be able to make the payments and we'll become a common maker line of. We just didn't fix the budget.
Make a motion that we approve uh draft article number three, line item twenty one for the Kentucky school assessments. If I quantify the number answer as a debt number.
Yeah, maybe you just refer to the. Yeah, I mean, it's the.
Prefer the listed sheet you have.
Yeah. Sorry.
All right, further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go to our side of the table.
Yeah, uh, I'll make a motion to. Uh, amend line twenty one to the allocated numbers there to address this. Maybe we'll conduct it, but it's settled.
Okay.
All in favor? It's unanimous.
In terms of rationale writing, uh, you know, we did, I I did put something in here here which. You may or may not have uh looked looked at closely, but I modeled this on something that's similar that was in the fall twenty twenty. Booklet, which was the last time there were any significant budget amendments. So, you know, I'll work with Rob on the those out of the booklet as to what level of narrative and I'm happy to write, you know, all of that.
Well, I'm I'm doing the rationales on this.
You are, but but whereas uh.
Yeah, yeah, where it's got.
This is kind of like out of class.
Yeah, this is our pain.
Yeah.
And sometimes you gotta figure out how to best present something that. You can go into the weeds today.
All right, great, thank you. So moving on from there, uh, that that leaves us with. Stormwater. You see, oh, the stormwater.
Water drainage.
Stormwater drainage, yeah. And I believe, I don't want to speak to the board, I I I do not expect that there's majority support on the board for this at this point. So if that's the case, I don't know how much we wanna go into it.
I'll start with a motion. Make a motion to remove article eleven, uh, stormwater drainage. From the town warrant.
Discussion.
Your point to do is one.
Um. I have a, first of all, I have a lot of compassion for the issue that the people have and you got a couple of neighbors, you got the state. I just don't see how the town has a responsibility to spend twenty four thousand dollars for research of an issue on private property. And if the town ever went down that path. And came to a solution and said you've got to do drainage and this and that, you know, half a million bucks. There's a presumption that the landlords could then expect you to contribute to the solution. Once you step down the wrong path, then it gets better, so I I. That's it, that's my.
So so the presumption that we could be expected to contribute to the solution. Um. Is first thing is.
Well, I don't think we should stop it.
Legally, we we couldn't. Contribute to work on on private property.
Then why stop at the twenty four thousand to do research?
So so my understanding, there was some issue of uh of infrastructure.
Stadium.
State.
Stadium.
Oh, yeah, on their property where they tied in. I mean, I originally I was, I I had the same concerns printed. But this affects a broader area than their property and there was some DOT issues, but since then I've learned that some of the things that have been done on those properties may have contributed to this, so I I really feel like, you know, look at this particular parcel. I don't think we should. Test the limits of, you know, town.
If I could, Wendy, Rick. Um, one other issue is anything we come up with. We we don't know that it's gonna be accepted as a solution by the state anyways. I mean, we would wanna know from the state that we should have a role. Before we eh eh go and ask for money. From the town. We went out and did something and the state just looked at us and said, well, what are you crazy? Don't your property? It's not it's not not, we control one thirteen. I'm very sympathetic to. I think there's issues here, by the way. And I think we we we're gonna be addressing them as we go through coming years. I think it has to be a little bit uh. Uh, by us learning how to deal with the state in certain cases, that we shouldn't have roads overland by water the way they are. And 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 people need to be able to get water off their property if it's if 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 it can be done. Although in that location, I'm not quite sure how you take the water off the property because the state, I don't think is gonna let you tie into the storm drain, but maybe they do. But again. No, but we no, no, but we have, we have an issue here that we need to follow up, but it doesn't revolve right now. Going to the town for money because even if we spend the money, the reception may be like, what are you guys? We're not gonna listen to you. That that's that's all I would say. I think there's issues here. I think they're gonna come before you board. You're gonna have to figure out how to do. It's gonna be very reminiscent of Ash Street. There will be solutions.
Yep.
But when the state's involved in private property. I I don't think we can expend funds at all.
Yeah, and there are, you know, recently this week it came out, there are funds available for the storms of that, you know.
Exactly.
So I mean, I I've never.
Yeah, I had a conversation with Roger about this and he wants to hear from us because they're trying to collect information. He's talking about grants and and all that stuff, so this stuff there. Yeah, exactly, right.
But I think this, the the town via the select board can advocate for these people with the state to embarrass them. I just think these. Even the initiation of the expenditure of money is dangerous.
Okay. Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So drop the warrant. So now Angus, I think you're left with five minutes.
Okay, now we are on the CPC article for the acquisition.
By the way, Jim is writing the rationale.
Okay. I can't provision to the.
My way family, uh, CPC or a.
No.
So, uh, so, you know, I think that, um. Uh, pack, you know, packet materials are are complete. I don't think any uh happy to talk about it, but if.
What are you, what are you saying? So this is close to a no brainer for you guys.
So I'll make a motion to approve draft article number fourteen, but a hundred is sum of a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. The support to conservation restriction of that big county green belt.
Okay. Okay, discussion?
Yeah. Um. With. It's not this property that bothers me. It's uh a part of the conservation restrictions in general and and how they evolve over time. There's a couple that happen and I think it's directly at them, but. I think of one that's very much hysteria, it was supposed to be a agricultural use, it's evolving and. And all these protections and this this document talks about everything is protected forever in the future. And it it's really not that. It's uh it's limited protection for duration, so I don't want people to have the illusion that. These things never change because they do change.
Can you say for duration? How do you mean that?
Oh, for one part, I'll look at, I'll throw out there is some Georgetown road. That was supposed to have been uh the Gaughan property, Georgetown and. Pray Neck and.
Yeah.
Tewksbury. And that was. As this county greenbelt at the time, I was at the meeting when the conservation restriction was put on by Clark Gowan. He allowed. He allowed the the benefit of that to them and I asked, you know, will this always stay open as a maintained field? And they said, yes. It's not, it's growing in. It's not getting old. Um, it's been, I don't know, twenty years and Nelson was on the the board at the time. So these, you know, at that meeting, I'm sitting there thinking, this'll be beautiful. Clark Gowan, we talked about it after the meeting. I thanked him very much because that's, to me, was one of the most beautiful businesses in town. He said, that's why he did it. And so I was in my mind, imagined that that field was always gonna be open. You go down Pray Next Street, you can't see across it now. And instead, he'll approach into the property, so. The impression of the illusion was it's always gonna stay that way. But these things always change in some form in some timeframe. And there are others, so I'm not opposed to it. I will vote for it. I just think. Maybe I don't know, maybe I was naive. I don't want people to have the impression that. People always come back and try and pick parts and pieces off of these things too. I know the one was down by you. This is on the Wayback Machine and they came back and wanted to build a house in the middle of that field down on Bridge Street. And it said right on the plans, not a building lot, but yet. People always come back and try and pick these things apart, even though in our view, that's what I like in one part, you know, fishing game, they're gonna have it, that's. That's done. The other part with the restriction, restrictions. It's squishy.
So I wonder if the key is putting language in the CR that that guarantees, you know, the kind of thing we talk about.
The language can be there, but thirty years down the road, you have to ask somebody to watch.
We do it.
We've got another one that I'm not mentioning in town that we have issues coming up with and.
Well, that's not a CR, but.
No, but it's protected land, same same. Type of issue. Uh, that these protections, there is not as ironclad as one might anticipate. They're a good thing. Um.
Don't you think it'd be better?
It's better than, it's better than not.
I, yeah, I'm just saying. Uh, be as naive.
Yeah, it's in in a way, Chris, it's sort of analogous to overland that the town has purchased. Over the course of the last twenty plus years, twenty to twenty five years, and, you know, we've spent a fair amount of money on on that. But we didn't. Not really thinking about what's the cost of maintenance and now, you know, now we're trying to reel it in, you know, the whole issue of invasives. It's, you know, it's an analogous. Analogous issue, you know, and so you need to, you need to understand that with any. Uh, with any. Any asset, there's always a maintenance cost associated.
Hundred percent.
Um, and and and, uh, you know. If you don't recognize that at the outset and don't wrap your arms around it at the outset, then it's gonna.
Get away from it. I mean, I think this is a very favorable opportunity for the town.
Yeah.
It's just not as, um, roses and uniforms and rain clothes as it appears.
Yes, it is.
Huh?
Yeah, and and the one thing is the CR is is for agriculture. It's not for like public access or anything.
That's actually a really important point for everyone to understand.
Yeah, I I do think that people need to remain aware of that.
Right.
Not not that that's not, you know, relevant, but um.
Well, that's a real positive. That's a real positive that it's agriculture.
Well, we have others in town that make that too, though.
And and in this case, when they say agriculture, they divorce us, they don't mean production of food. Correct?
Well, it might be trees, I don't know.
Could be trees, but what what it won't be.
Airport.
It won't be.
Okay. Refer to the session. All in favor?
Aye. All right, so over to our side.
Can we put a sunset date on that though, or is that our?
Yeah, we should have a sunset date on that.
You gotta deal with the sunshine.
Oh, yeah, cool.
Right, so so over to our side. Jim, you wanna make sure we know about the sunset date?
Yeah.
Right, so what do you guys say, twenty five?
They're probably, I mean, their goal is to do four twenty four.
Yeah, but but I again, yeah, yeah, right, so you never know.
Twenty five?
This could be a twenty five, then, um. Guys. They know more about it than maybe you guys have been privy to. Do you wanna hear a little bit about it? Angus can take it through it or. You know, do you have questions about it?
I I just have one question. On the proposed Department of Fishing Game purchase?
Mm-hmm. So Green Belt is purchasing the whole parcel and immediately selling that eighteen acres to fishing games, so that abuts their current property? So they'll just buy that outright and that will, public can go on that, but it won't be trails or anything.
Okay, so it's just a.
But the habitat, it's a great habitat.
Yeah, and then also at the same time, they have a private buyer in hand who will purchase the rest of the eighteen acres. Um, and then immediately sell a CR on the fourteen acres to the town in Greenbelt. And they'll have where the houses are right now, the four acres, that will remain a house lot. And there might be room for another house lot other than that four acres, but the rest of it will have an agricultural.
So on all this land, you may end up with one additional house lot and then you preserve. Farming in some agriculture in some manner, uh, which means you shouldn't expect a ton of buildings out there and then. And then you have this habitat.
Right, and actually, and a budding neighbor to the east of this is also, if this deal goes through, they'll donate. Five acres or something of their property, eight acres maybe to the fishing game, so, you know, additional acres that comes out of it.
Okay.
So our role is to contribute, and I think there's a financial sheet in there in there. It's really good. And basically, we're contributing about half of what it's gonna cost to do the CR. And remember, the CR goes to the that fourteen acre parcel of farmland, so that's really our participation.
So how does it preserve the habitat if you use it for agriculture?
No, those.
The eighteen acres right along the Ash Street that the parcel currently.
Four lots.
Four lots.
Well, one lot is going to the state. That's the habitat protection.
Okay.
One lot is the farmland. In fact, the map is great showing that.
And then Angus had fourteen as agriculture. Then four.
The state has, in the past, they put up a pretty good amount of money for that.
I I thought they were very generous with it.
Then wasn't the total thing in there someplace? Was the total. Package in there or just the CR package?
Um, just as the, they're still, they don't have a sign for some.
Oh, right, they have some other information and they're going to town meeting and this is not nailed down.
So the purchase, the appraisal on the CR will probably not be complete by town meeting, so the motion will have to be contingent on.
Right. So, but this is the closest you'll ever see Angus. The wanting to have. A no brainer answer in three seconds flat. You'll never do that again. This is the biggest no brainer I always like that. You like it, but you've never, you've you've never, you've never put it forward and and quite that.
Well, just. Which is, yeah, no, I don't wanna.
Well, we're targeting to be done by eight o'clock.
I know.
So 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 are you guys got any more questions or?
I just wanna add one, one thing, just so it doesn't hit anyone by surprise when you see the draft motions. As you know, the uh. Article deals with the total amount, hundred and seventy five. The motion is what specified and what bucket it's coming from, from CPA money. And so I'm looking at the balances and the the current balance of the space is about seventy three five. So the motion is basically gonna be for roughly seventy three five from open space bucket of CPA with the balance from one. Uh, undesignated, so what what's interesting, by the time we actually close on this.
We'll have.
There's gonna be more than an open space bucket. It's just one of the awkward things about CPA.
I mean, when does that actually go in?
November, I think, is when we get our big one state.
Is that, is that about right, Danny?
When we get the state.
Match.
Um, yes, well, November, yeah.
So seventy three five from CPA, the rest is undesigned.
It's all CPA funds.
All CPA.
There's this bucket difference. They have different buckets. This this is also in our team, just going to share, but uh, so any, any, anything further? Rick reminds us that we have an eight o'clock deadline and. So any more questions?
My my point is probably also our team, but I, when I go down Ash Street near the swamp, there's two real for sale signs, yeah. Like what's in there?
Well, one of them be removed when we do this or where is it or are?
You can have one.
They're both for the same property.
Okay.
One's the house and one's the land.
Got it.
I think they're just trying to get visual appeal. It's a big parcel, I put two signs.
I'm trying to spark. Real estate.
But but there is a P and S for the, you know, Green Belt does have have a.
P and S, right. But Jim, well, the first sign is it runs from here all the way to the pavement, hence, hence the whole.
Far. So one of those sites is actually for this property that we're voting on and talking about today.
They're both.
They're both, remember this four parcels, they.
One's for the house and one's for the rest of it.
Right.
And everything's kind of under agreement anyways, so the signs are being, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to fund the hundred and seventy five thousand to support the conservation restrictions. For the proposed Green Belt. In town conservation intervention purchase.
Right.
All in favor?
Yep.
It's unanimous. And Jim is writing the.
Did we mention a subset on that one? Yeah, this is your team. Thanks.
Jim was all over that.
It is. All right, the next article is a non-financial article. This is to repeal the personnel bylaw. And uh, it's really, uh, we view it as a housekeeping issue. Uh, there's been a lot of major changes to the. Context for adoption of personnel policies. There's uh authorities are continue to be vested with the select board as they are in that bylaw, but it's really the Town Manager Act. That gives the board actually much clearer and more specific authority to adopt personnel policies. Uh, so in concert with the proposed repeal of the bylaw. Uh, we're working with the board to make amendments to the personnel policy to to reflect that. Those policies would no longer be adopted under the authority of a bylaw. They would be adopted under the Town Manager Act, which is the statutory framework for. Uh, for adoption of personnel policies, so. Uh, from a, you know, policy standpoint, this really wouldn't change anything. Uh, because the uh board was, is, will continue to be the the policy setting entity for personnel. Uh because the uh board was, is, will continue to be the the policy-setting entity for personnel policies. Uh the Town Manager under the act is charged with implementation of those policies. Uh one thing, you know, one of the kind of tangible changes of this, it does, the bylaw is what includes the. Um uh kind of sets up the uh definition of the personnel committee. In practice, that committee has not been active for many, many years, uh they did, I did kind of. We convened a number of meetings, so my first year and a half or so, that were not particularly fruitful. Uh and it's a practical matter, the select board is the policy-setting entity for personnel policies. So I think this would be a, you know, would kind of eliminate an existing kind of inconsistency between the. The statute or the Town Manager Act and the the personnel bylaw, which are currently kind of out of sync.
And I I guess I would add that there are a number of these kinds of bylaws and committees that we wanted to start taking one at a time to clean things up.
If you read through them, they need attention and, you know, like the. Okay, you know, so there's various reasons, plus we're getting more and more into the screen of the Town Manager Department. And and hopefully we'll keep doing that because it's better to, I think it's better to have. The board and the CEO attend to these matters than to try and find people that. Of the public that even know what the issues are, I mean, yeah, you get a lot of expertise.
Make a motion on Article twenty-one to repeal the personal bylaw.
Alright, for this, I think.
On our side of the table? So so we're required, we're required to make recommendations to all more.
No, you're you're authorized to. You're authorized to. You're not, you're not required to.
It's a shell.
No, no, it's a shall recommend on financial articles may recommend on others.
No, you're gonna have to show behind the bar.
I am showing you.
For precedent, the last, within the last couple of years, that if it's not financial, the finance committee has weighed in.
No, that's not true. We've weighed in a lot of.
You could argue it definitely was financial. That one did have financial impact, that was our justification.
Uh Finance Committee, uh shall need to prepare recommendations regarding all articles, so. Especially those involving.
Thank you, so so we are required by town bylaw, thank you very much, we are required by town bylaw. Now, that doesn't mean that we have to do anything other than uh uh. Parrot, but yeah, we're supposed, we by by law, but let's get to end this zero dollar conversation, so. Are we gonna, uh you have any questions about this? Do you have any concerns about re- 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 personal bylaw? Yeah, okay, so do we have a motion? So a motion to repeal personal bylaw? Second, my end, uh all in favor? It's unanimous.
Sorry, my mistake, I I.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
I mean, that's the part of it is now they have to write the rationale.
And and has to write the rationale, but but the deal is, the deal is um. Uh the the deal is that this would be very.
Yeah, and it'd probably be thinned out a bit, but but it's all.
Yeah, yeah, and we are required, so we can just sense with the zero.
And then finally, uh you talked about opioid uh proposal create stabilization account at your last meeting. Uh the only additional information that we provided for this meeting, uh which was intended to respond to all the questions on allowable use. Was the actual settlement agreement, uh and the framework for that, uh you know, with the state. Uh which sets out very clearly the allowable uses, there's a whole range of them, uh but this is uh. Uh you know, there's the funds can't be used for anything beyond that. What we did not address, and Jenny and I talked about it, we didn't, we felt it was not. You know, really knowable at this time, you know, there there were discussions at the last meeting about administratively, who would or actually make those decisions. The select board is the party to the settlement agreement, so the funds are under the select board's control. In practice, administratively, whether that's something that they ultimately delegate those decisions to the Town Manager. Or or whether they want to individually consider them, it's such a small balance, you know, we've talked it through, uh every, you know, we've kept. Chief Dwyer, Paul Sivin, the primarily others, but those are really the two offices that would have the most interest in this. We've kept them apprised, you know, when the settlement agreements were approved, the funds that come in is such a small balance. Uh that could always change, and I think, you know, we would work with the board at that time as to whether. The board would want individual proposals to come before them for votes, similar to how you handle ARPA. Or if you'd like to just say, you know, at some point adopt a policy to say the, you know, use of shell. I mean, they are constrained by this, they can't be used for anything but this, but we don't know exactly how they'd be used. There's been no request to use them.
You don't even know how big it's gonna be.
Correct, right, so so I think we felt that was something we didn't feel we could just like. Tell you exactly how it'd be, because we we don't know.
So we've answered the primary question, that was the primary question, is is there some other entity that we're not thinking of that might have dibs? The answer is no.
No, it's the select board, it's the.
Great, that was the only question we had, yeah.
Well, make the motion to accept the draft article twenty-five, opioid settlement stabilization account.
On favor? Hi.
To our side? Questions, concerns? Wait for that, motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept draft article point five, establish the opioid settlement stabilization account.
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous, oh, and you got to put your hand up. Unanimous, and would you mind writing that one?
I'm writing my name right next to it.
Thank you, appreciate it. Cool, great. Wasn't eight o'clock, Rick, but we did the best, I mean, but remember we had the nice diversion.
That's why it's funky around.
Thank you very much, thank you, Angus, thank you very much. I mean, don't you think this is an excellent, great, okay, good, great. And before everybody came in, by the way, Wendy did say, what, what do you, what do you, what do you mark about this process?
How efficient and supportive it is for all parties involved?
It's definitely good hearing everybody's, everybody's thoughts.
Right.
Um and uh and being able to have, in those cases, being able to have banter works really well.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes, there is.
Sure. Just a a brief thing, just, you know, Rob's gonna be following up with everything he has on on book of materials. Great.
Five o'clock deadline for anything that we agreed to do up through last week, I'll close a new deadline of Wednesday. Uh next for anything we agreed to do tonight.
And it's really the rationales and then the the cover letter issue, uh but everything else, I put it all together, the format, I'm happy to do all that.
But but you worked also directly with Ross.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You know, Walter reported back that it went swimmingly.
He did, yeah.
Meaning he he gave Ross a lot of credit for for how we did it, so.
Yeah.
Angus does most of the work.
I know that, but you don't have to admit that, you don't have to.
I just rough it out.
Yeah, 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 and we all, it's the same. That Chris needs to go back to see who's right on the all of the most.
Chris thought it was fair to me, that was actually Walter. That was Walter, who did what? She checked and see how much.
Oh, I thought you said it was you. Very good, anyway, so we are adjourned, right?
Sure.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, that uh.
Thank you, Dan.
Dan and Jim seconded, thank you, thank you very much.
For those, uh we assume the select board is still convened and does have some regular.
We're united, yeah.
Well, I'm not gonna be the announcement of that fine.
Thank you, good to see you, Gary.
So this is basically a switch for Alejandro.
Shut the door.
Uh no, we're still open second.
Thanks, Rob.
I'm from full member Conservation Commission, associate and um appointment of Haley Craven. From Associate Member to full member, so I guess we need separate motions for that.
We're in over two. Um sure, but yeah, I'll I'll make a motion, um so I guess, because we can't have two people as a full member at the same time. Then we have to.
We're gonna make a motion to swap the two positions.
I think that's a no-brainer.
Okay.
Well, I mean, we know what we're doing, is that legitimate?
That's why I put it in that order on the agenda is to to first, you know, kind of.
Yeah, I mean, technically, we're probably gonna do this, it's easy enough to do it, so I I move that we um appoint Alejandro Chandler as the Associate Member of the. Conservation Commission.
Second, on favor?
Can I just ask a question, what, why are, why are the, cause in the discussion originally. You have to recall, where, why are we switching now?
What? Because.
Well, why why are they choosing to switch, or why do they wish to switch? I assume.
Why do we wish to?
Why, why we, so I.
Yeah, because um um Alejandro has not been able to attend one of these, she was.
Okay.
She has some personal stuff that's.
Okay, okay, right.
Volunteered to change associates.
Okay, great. Yeah, okay, good, yeah, um. People love that.
Alright, bye.
And the term again for the associate, that's just for the the fiscal year, good, alright, so that's two six thirty twenty-four.
Okay, and then I move that we appoint Harold McCraven to Conservation Commission.
For term of. There's a three-year term.
Did you second?
No, you didn't. Alright, thank you, I believe that does it for the regular.
So um.
I move that we go to executive session, um. Uh study national on chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, eight, three.
On favor?
Parker, right.
I'm gonna stay here or go to your office?
Uh.
It said Town Manager Office.
Oh, yeah, I think I think. Uh so for those watching the meeting, the board is uh recessing to executive session and will only convene in open session for the purpose of adjournment. And will only convene in an open session for the purpose of the term. Thank you.